Call this meeting in order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Councilmember Olson is absent this evening, all other councilmembers are We have an agenda that was presented, is there any changes to the agenda as presented? None, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, seconded by Warren.
Yeah.
Any discussion? Call the motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extensions, motion carries, four in favor, none against. So we have our minutes from our August 6th meeting, is there any corrections or changes to the minutes as presented?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Dave to approve the minutes as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Warren. Any discussion? Call the motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extensions, motion carries, four in favor, none against.
I guess, I wasn't here so I didn't know about it.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Three in favor, none against, one abstentions.
But, yeah, I'm staying, I guess.
Did you get that?
Hi.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Keith. Moving on to our public open forum, is there anybody here who wishes to address council this evening? Anybody wish to address the council? Seeing none, then we'll go right into our reports and presentations. Brian, our police department report.
Evening Mayor and Council. Okay, activity report for July 2014, some of the numbers we had, we had 15 alarm calls, we had 16 personal assists, we had 34 assists for other agencies, eight dog complaints, seven driving without a license. We had 16 matter of information calls, 18 medicals, seven noise complaints, 10 accidents, 16 suspicious calls, 16 thefts. And we had 287 verbal warnings given out, we had a total activity of 652. We worked 12 hours of TZD which was for speeds and impaired driving. And then next one, if you look at it by month, we were up 18 calls, we were up 37 more warnings for an up total of 55. And to compare it to 2013, we were down 62 calls, warnings were up 52 and down 10 calls. Otherwise, that's all I really have for July, busy month with the holidays.
Brian just wanted to make note of one thing on your first graph of calls per month for the year.
Yup.
The July number, and then you compare it to your July of what I would say would be 2013, right?
Yup.
Okay, but the number you're using in that July is actually your 2012 number on your next graph, so I think it's not carrying the right year forward.
I see that over now, yeah.
So you might want to find, correct that for your next report, but just an FYI.
Yeah, I see that. Thank you.
Is there any questions for Brian in regards to the report as presented?
Nope.
Nope? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I do have one question, Brian, how's the canine coming?
It sounds like the trainer has picked the dog, and I haven't heard what type of dog it is yet, but, so he has picked one out and he's in the process of doing his training with it, so hopefully September, our officers will be, it'll be late September, would be starting with the training with the dog.
Perfect.
Yup.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the ambulance department quarterly report. Kathy?
Good evening, Council and Mayor. This is the second quarter report for April 1st through June 30th, so this is a little delayed for the second quarter due to our moving of the ambulance garage on 19 nights, I apologize for the delay. So this is the second quarter report. For April 2014, we were paged out 61 times and broken down into nine no loads or canceled calls, 11 advanced life support transfers, 10 basic life support transfers, and a total of 31 scene responses, so 61 total compared to 59 in April of 2013, which was up from 42 in 2012. In May, we ended up with 55 callouts, 10 of which were no loads or no canceled calls, 12 were advanced life support transfers, and four basic life support transfers, and 29 scene responses, so 55 total calls in 2014, and in 2013 we had 52, and in 2012 46. June, we had 55 total pageouts, five of which were no loads or canceled calls, seven ALS transfers, and 12 BLS transfers, 31 scene responses, so again a total of 55, which was up from last year at 39, but we're still down from 2012 in that month where we had 61 calls in June of 2012. And then I've got them divided up down here so you can see kind of the no loads, the no canceled calls, why we were canceled or the no loads. I didn't get the call types in for this quarter report. Our receiving facilities, both on ALS transports and BLS transports is St. Cloud Hospital, and you can see it down from there, the U of M Gillette's. We have four airport transports where we've had to go to the airport, take patients out there to meet up with the air helicopter and load them into the air ambulances. And then in SOC Center, or for the scene transports around here, SOC Center of course is our highest hospital, and just occasionally when we're out in the outer skirts of our territory, they want to go to a different facility, or if we're over helping Melrose, we might have to go to Melrose Hospital or Albany. We've billed out 55,000, over 55,000 in April, over 48,000 in May, and over 51,000 in June. So far, we have 221,503 that we've taken in as of the first half of the year.
Before you go on to the next page, Kathy, maybe I could ask now, your June number of bill versus the total calls is only about 62 percent compared to April of 95 percent of the calls that you responded to, you billed on, why is the number so much lower? It appears you billed on 34 of the 55 calls.
Mm-hmm.
Is there still more billing to be done, maybe?
No, no, they're billed out. Some of them, we had a couple of like hospital assists, or like the air ambulance assists, those don't get billed out to the patients, so those don't get included in there.
Okay. So maybe on your next report, if you see those significant differences, you could research that and bring that to the meeting, would be, I think, helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, and then I just have the age, male and female, and a number of agents in the age of the patients, and you could, you know, specifies here how many females, how many males in each age bracket that we've transferred, or even on the no loads, we do still document their gender and their age, so we can still keep track of the age group, unless we're canceled completely, we don't get there of course. So you can see that 65 and older is our highest bracket of the transported patients that we deal with, and females, females 65 and older is our highest bracket. And then sad Friday, I'm sorry, Fridays was our highest call day, with 20 and a half percent on Fridays. And then I have the townships that we responded to, of course SOC Center, city is our highest at 83 percent of our calls, we're right in the city of SOC Center. And then SOC Center township and Kendota Township was the next highest, and it breaks it down from there.
Do you share some of these townships with other agencies? Like Melrose is for example?
Um, some of, let me look here, Little SOC, we might split part of that with Long Prairie, yeah, we do, we split part of that with Long Prairie. West Union's all ours, Westport, we might split part of that with Glenwood.
Okay.
And Birch Hills all ours, so I think that's the only ones that we split, actually.
All right, thank you.
Lake George maybe, I'm not sure. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you, Kathy.
All right, thank you.
All right, well, moving right on along here, we're in our action items already. Action item 7A is appoint firefighter. Nikki?
If you recall, at the June 4th city council meeting, the council approved that the fire department, or they gave them permission to advertise interview and prioritize a new hiring list from which to select candidates for replacement firefighters. They did go through that process, and they have selected a candidate that they're requesting to be appointed at this time. And Chief is here, if you have any questions, yeah, he's still back there. If you have any questions for him about the process itself, otherwise the action that they're requesting is to approve the appointment of Wayne Sense to the SOC Center Fire Department effective upon acceptable background review and pre-employment physical. So he still has the pre-employment physical to complete, and then his employment will be effective upon supplying that to us.
Okay, any questions?
No.
Is there a motion then to approve the appointment of Wayne Sense to the SOC Center Fire Department effective upon acceptable background review and pre-employment physical?
So moved.
Motion by Keith, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dave, is there any discussion? I'll call the motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, aye. Motion carries, three in favor, none against, one abstention, I'm sustaining because I was on the interview committee this year, so. Moving on then to B. Approved Resolution 2014-65, calling for the public hearing on proposed assessments for unpaid city and utility service charges.
It's that time of the year where we would have our public hearings to consider assessing those unpaid utility and service charges to property taxes. A lot of that is maybe lawn mowing, snow removal, maybe an unpaid utility bill at the public utility, that type of thing. And of course, you know, the first thing we have to do is call a hearing, and then we have a number of days that the people have to come in and speak with us before we actually go to the public hearing, so we are requesting to set that date for October 1st. And you have the resolution in your packet, calling that hearing and putting the whole process in motion. So we're asking for Resolution 2014-65, calling for a public hearing on the proposed assessments.
Thank you, Vicki, again, this is a common practice that we do every year, is there any questions in regards to it? Is there then a motion to approve the Resolution 2014-65, calling hearing on the unpaid utility and service charges?
So moved.
Motion by Dave, seconded by Warren.
Yeah.
Is there any discussions? How are the numbers, do we have a large number of those?
No.
No? Good. All right. Any other questions?
No.
I'll call the motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extensions, motion carries, four in favor, none against. Okay, moving on. Action 7C, accept letter of resignation.
As you are aware, our Deputy Treasurer, Carol Indridin, she submitted her letter of resignation effective August 22nd. She has been with the city for 15 years, and I guess I'd like to thank Carol for her years of service with the city, and I wish her success in her future plans, whatever they might be. And I did include for you a copy of her resignation, but I believe you received copies of that already, but I didn't include it in the packet.
Any questions? Is there a motion to accept the resignation of Carol Indridin?
So moved.
Motion by Warren, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Keith. Is there any discussion? I'll call the motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extensions, motion carries, four in favor, none against. And I as well wish Carol the best of luck and thank her for her 15-plus years of service. Moving on to 7D then, approve appointment timeline procedure for the accounting payroll specialist, so we will now go out to the, and go through the process of replacing that resignation.
Right, and due to that resignation, we did prepare a timeline for filing the vacant position, I did put the timeline in your packet for you. I will note that this is a very aggressive timeline to get it done, and this would result in a candidate beginning work on about October 1st. It could very well be pushed back, there's interview delays, people have given notice that there are other jobs, et cetera. We also did put an advertisement in the paper, in League of Minnesota Cities and some of those, and we're actually getting applications, they're already starting to come in. If the city, they'd accepted the resignation, if we authorized filling the position and the job description and get the advertisements going, we do have what I call a soft deadline for next Friday, and this has been advertised already for some, for about a week, actually, and that would give us some flexibility to accept additional applications if we're not satisfied with what we have by that specific date. Then a week, the first week after Labor Day, we'd review and rate the applications on the TNA rating system. Hopefully the next week, or maybe the one after that, we would be conducting interviews, and then make a conditional job offer, and then formal council action on September 17th. More than likely, a formal council action would be two weeks later on the first meeting in October, but just kind of gives you an idea of how the process flows. And another thing that we would want to discuss and decide is, you know, the interview committee, does personnel committee want to be involved in the TNA ratings, do they want to be involved in the interview itself, you know, how much involvement, I know different positions in the city, the council are more or less involved in. Or do we bring, we can bring someone up from the outside to help us interview, that's the kind of thing that we'll be going over with the personnel committee to kind of come back with a recommendation on exactly how that will go. We're not quite ready for interviews yet, but hopefully by the next council meeting, we'll have that process completely firmed up.
And so, just to follow up with, as Vicki noted, the personnel committee has had the chance to take a look at the ad that was prepared, and I believe that was sent out to the, to almost everybody, certainly, this is a process that we want to get filled quicker rather than later, there's a lot of work being picked up and done by a lot of different people here internally, and it's definitely something that's a fairly big job, so we want to move it forward, I think, in a quick fashion. However, as Vicki stated, giving us the opportunity to do a soft deadline allows us to have some flexibility. At the September 3rd meeting, we'll come back with a recommendation to the council in regards to the next process, and then the council at that time can talk about whether or not we should set a committee or elect to choose the personnel committee to go through with the interviews, but that'll come then the following week after September 3rd, so the week of September 8th.
Warren, you did anything to add?
No, I just was just going to ask the other councilmembers if, after they looked at the job description, if there was anything that they knew of that might need to be changed or added, or...
Anybody have anything?
Before we get to that point, so.
Okay.
I don't have anything right off, no.
All right. Okay, so with that, if there's no question, I guess we're looking for, approve the timeline as the job description and the timeline is presented, if there's no questions, is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Warren, and seconded by Dave to approve the job description and the timeline as presented. A motion and a second, is there any discussion? I'll call the motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extensions, motion carries, four in favor, none against. And I just want to thank the staff and Vicki for picking up the last week or so in regards to the jobs and the duties, keep things moving very smoothly here in the office. With that, we'll move on. 7E, approve request for scope of services for storm pond cleanout.
We do have two stormwater ponds in the city that, you know, we talked about it off and on for the last couple of years of getting them cleaned out, you know, we're getting the purple loo strife in them, and just a lot of sediment in the ponds, and so the discharge pipes, the sediment is getting taller than the discharge pipes. The two that we're the most concerned about is the industrial park pond, and what we're calling the freeway pond, it's the one by the wastewater treatment plant, which goes back from Walmart, and then it goes back on the wastewater treatment plant property. And so it's recommended that they be cleaned and they get restored to their original construction elevations, and so what we were tossing around was having the city engineer develop a plan for that restoration, and how exactly we're going to go about doing that, and shooting the elevations, and that type of thing, but I think before we would want to engage him to do that, we'd probably want to put in here, request a scope of services for them to, a proposal so that they can develop those plans for us and take us through that process. Some of the smaller ponds, we were able to do with local contractors, et cetera, but these are quite large, and maybe a little beyond what our existing staff wants to tackle without the assistance of the engineer.
Is there any questions?
I just got, is there any original plans for when those ponds were put in, so we could?
We do have some plans, they're not detailed like you would have today, but I think we would provide them with to the engineer, and then he would just have to go from there. We have some construction plans, like when the street was put in and the pond were dug and that type of thing.
For like elevations and that?
Yup.
Okay. Because what I was wondering is whether or not we couldn't use those and alleviate some of the costs of having to go through the whole scope of having the engineer work on this. Basically, you're talking a, it's a holding pond, you know, and I don't know how detailed you'd need to get to dig out three or four feet of dirt out of a bottom of a hole.
The contractors that I've talked to on those ponds, when the bigger ponds like that, they're like, okay, how deep you're going to go, how are you going to monitor it, you know, who's going to do the testing, where does it have to be taken, you know, those kinds of, those kinds of questions. You know, I don't know that we need a whole engineered design drawing, but we need somebody to take us through that process, I guess.
What kind of dollars are you thinking it's going to cost to do the scope of service or the proposal? Nothing?
You'll have to ask Keith that part.
Keith?
I haven't put it together yet, so.
How much is the cost of putting it together?
But that's just part of the services that you do for the state.
You're asking me to put together a scope of services, that's something we would just do, charge you to put together, you know, a scope for the thing, but, you know, then once you prove that, whatever you assume you do, that would be costly.
So right now, what you're going to do at this point, Keith, what you do is take a look at our ponds, probably take a look at the existing maps, and come back to us with a proposal of what the next steps would be.
Yeah, that was some discussion with staff all the way up.
Okay, so there's no cost to us to get that.
Okay, all right.
Okay. The pond over on Sinclair, I call it the industrial, the Sinclair Lewis Pond, but it's actually an industrial park pond, has been in existence for many, many, many years, if I recall. I think that one's going to have some additional concerns just based on the, how the pond has grown up over the years, because it's turned into, I think you've got some habitat issues, you've got a lot of issues going on with that pond, that's going to take a little bit more research to determine how much can be dredged out, what are you going to do with what comes out, and then how do you restore the current elevation and interior of, help me out, but.
You're going to have to restore it back to the state.
Contour, because that one has significantly changed over the course of the years, and has never had any, I don't think it's ever had any work done to it.
No.
And then I guess the next question would be is, and this would be a question I'm sure Keith will look at, is, well, what does it need to be today versus what it was originally put in? Does that need to change based on what we've done with the growth and expansion of the industrial park itself, and what now flows into that pond compared to what did 20 years ago?
It's my understanding, it was designed to handle the industrial park when it's developed, so it already took that into consideration, so I don't know if there's going to be a lot of changes, but that's something we'll dig out for him to look through.
All right, very good.
One of the things I was just, now that Brad mentioned habitat, since there's cattails all the way around, is that something that, you know, when we come to dredge that out, is that something that the DNR is going to step in and say that it's got to stay? Is that a possibility?
Not that it has to stay, but that's an issue we're not to deal with, we may even have to mitigate all that stuff up. Usually when we do the maintenance of a desolate stormwater pond, we should be able to hold it up, but we are going to have, it will be a permanent process.
Right.
Okay.
All right, with that, I think if it's a general consent to the council, we would just move forward with the scope of the service proposal?
Yeah.
Yeah? Vicki and Nikki, general consent, we'll move forward with action E, and approve the request for scope of services for the storm pond cleanout.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to F, approve the amendment to lease agreement, Department of Public Safety.
Our lease with the Department of Public Safety, that is for the use of the arena for driver's license testing on Wednesday, they take, for about an hour and a half in the mornings, they take tests, the written test, and then they'll schedule appointments in the afternoons for the driving tests. And the lease uses just the mezzanine, not the rest of the arena, and they do like motorcycle skills in the parking lot, and they do their CDL maneuvers, like stop, start, park, that type of thing. They are proposing a lease renewal for an additional three years, and it's 585 per quarter, or 2,340 per year, which has worked out very well for us. I mean, it's just, it gets a consistent income up there at the arena, at virtually hardly any cost to the city at all. And they've been there now six years, close to six years, they had the, they used to be at the Armory, before the Armory remodel. So I guess what we're requesting is approve the lease amendment with the state.
When's the last time the lease dollars have changed?
Uh, three years ago, when we raised it a little bit because we started providing them internet.
Okay, is it a fairer rate based in today's economics?
I guess this is what they're proposing, he didn't, I talked to him about that, and he said, well, it's a whole process they have to go through if they want to raise it, I mean, we can certainly propose a raise to them, and they can take it back to theirs if they want.
I'm okay with the rate, but I'm just wondering when does this be, you know, looked at again, as far as the, everything goes up, I mean, it's just the world we live in.
Is this renewed annually?
It's a three years.
Three. Three year.
I was just wondering if there is like a 60-day notice or something before the next, if we approve this, if there's three years from now, say, we give them 90-day notice that we want to increase, if that would give them enough time to get that in the loop.
You know, I don't know how long it takes them to go through their end of it, and I can certainly call him, and it doesn't spell it out in the lease itself.
I was just, I'm fine with, you know, for another three years, it's just the fact that I just want to know when it comes to that time, instead of it just showing up in front of a council with approval, and the same questions come up, maybe 90 days prior, it's reviewed, and we see whether or not we need to increase it and talk to them about it before the actual agreement needs to be renewed, so.
Okay, I will, I'll just put a note in our file that we contact them ahead of that, or I bring it to the council ahead of this, so that you'll have time to have that discussion.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? Is there, and there is a motion to approve the lease amendment of the State of Minnesota Department of Public Safety as noted?
So moved.
Motion by Warren, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Keith.
I just want to clarify that under the rent, you have 585 in quarterly payments, but you have written down here $7,000.
That's over the three years.
That's over the three years, okay.
Yeah, I saw that too, I thought, boy, well, they got the comma in the wrong place, but it's 7,020.
Yeah, at first I thought it was 70,000.
All right, any other comments? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second, I'll call the motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extensions, motion carries, four in favor, none against. Okay, moving on to G, approve the planned change, solicit votes for Fourth Street Project. Vicki?
This is a little amendment, or a change, or a correction, if you will, for Fourth Street Project, and it is at the corner of Fourth and Ash, the property that would be on the northeast corner. on the northeast corner of that intersection bound to Mr. David Meyer. We had quite a bit of problems this last year with the freezing of the line and the public utility was out there weekly thawing the line for him and it's simply, there's just not enough fall on the line. And it's just not, the line itself is not flowing correctly. And so we had a proposal drawn up by Stan Tech on what the correction could be and we looked at two options. One was to go from his service line in the boulevard and go west and go under his driveway and the sidewalk and into Ash and collect, and go into the main on Ash. And the other one was to go east and go into the main on Fourth, down just past that first manhole at the alley. And we looked at the two proposals and thought that there could be more fall on the line if we went to the east and went to the one and Fourth. So Keith did draw up this plan so that it is ready to go out for bids or quotes, if you will, but I did provide that to Mr. Meyer and he came in and talked and he does have some concerns about it. He has concerns about the length of the service line and who's responsible for it, concerns about digging in the boulevard, damage to his sprinkler systems, damage to his trees, that type of thing. What he would prefer that we do is have him go straight out in the street and put a new main out in Fourth Street. And I don't know that that's economically feasible to dig a new main in for one person, but that's, that's a council decision to make. And I did front Keith a little bit that we would have this conversation so he'd be prepared to answer any questions regarding this design. And if you, if the council elects to go with this design, then we'll get some quotes for it and get the project done. It's that Fourth Street project is still open and there's still funding in there that we can cover the costs of it, so it won't cost Mr. Meyer any money to make this change. It's just that if we don't make the change, we'll be out there a couple of times a week, probably thawing it out again this winter. And we think it's a correction that needs to happen. Does anybody have questions for Keith?
Yeah, I do. And just so everybody's aware, Vicki and I actually stopped him today when Dave was here and we were visiting with him in regards to this. And obviously, I'm going to just kind of note what he had mentioned to us and I can understand his concern. One being, it worked perfectly fine before we started the project, is what he had noted to us. And secondly was, he has concerns about his yards, his sprinklers, and his trees when we open this up and do this replacement. Now, you can see from the drawing and design, we have some restoration of pretty significant in order to get it back to its original. Sodding, as an example, tremendous amount of dollars will be put into bringing it back up to its, to the way it was before we started. But I just wanted to note some of Dave's concerns. As Vicki noted, he would rather us extend the mains into the street and bring it straight out the way it would be for any, any new development. However, he also understands that it's one home that it serves and we discussed that today and we have many other services in the community that are similar in fashion to this. And we talked about several of them right down here on the end of Oak Street just several months ago. So I think it comes down to, one is, we cannot continue to have the troubles that he has week after week after week all winter long. I mean, we can't expect the city utilities to be out there cleaning it. So I think we all know we need to fix it. It's just a matter of what's the best. And now Keith, you're proposing for this to go to the east. I think one of the main reasons is, is in order to get the proper slope. With anything, you can do too much slope as well, right?
Yeah, there is a concern with too much slope, not in this particular case, but that would be...
If we were to go, the distance that you have, the total construction distance is about 170 feet, I believe, to go to the east. If we were to go to the west, we have some concerns then about a driveway, a sidewalk, potential freezing up issues because there's no snow, there's no insulation, say the speed overlooked.
Right, in the boulevard you're referring to, yep, absolutely.
So that also adds to it. Will we get proper depth if we were to go to the east, excuse me, go to the west versus to the east?
It's shallower if we go to the west. Going to the east gives us about a foot and a half extra depth to deal, to work with. One of the reasons we looked at putting it in the boulevard is, A, to not tear up the new street and B, is we get additional insulation, if you will, by being out in the boulevard. Being in the street, the frost depths go much deeper in the street versus out in the boulevard. You think about typical, you're going to have snow mounds over there, it insulates that area, so we'll have less concerns with freezing in that, in those conditions, being in the boulevard. I understand Mr. Meyer's concerns, you know, of the restoration of the yard and, you know, we thought about that, took into account, but, you know, the big concern is we don't want to be back here jetting this thing all the time. It's shallow. We looked at going in the street, even if you go to the east, we're still in the street. You know, we have a much increased risk of it continuing to freeze when we put it in the street. And we also are close to, closer to the storm sewer, a large storm sewer, when we have it in the street. So there definitely are some design concerns as it relates to keeping it in the street versus keeping it in the boulevard. So I did talk with Marty and at the PUC today and we talked over some of these issues and, you know, they're in agreement that it would be the least risky, the way we have it now, to keep it from freezing up again. There's a lot, very little flow. This particular home uses less water than the average home, so there's very little flow that comes through here. So what happens unfortunately with that is it just keeps that little bit, just, you get a little freeze and then it, and then a little bit more water and it just keeps building up a ice dam in there when there's just not enough flow, which is why we go to a smaller pipe. The reason we had the larger pipe in the first place is that's the pipe that was stubbed out of there and initially, when we did that project, you know, several years ago, the utility didn't want to replace that pipe. So we utilized that same pipe that we already had. Well, now it's causing us problems unfortunately, especially with this real hard winter that we had this last winter. A number of places froze up that had never frozen up before, so if we had the normal winter, would we have the same exact issue next year? Perhaps not, but, you know, we don't know. And we certainly don't want to go back there and keep having to do that time and time again in the wintertime, so, you know, this is, we feel that this is the safest issue, the safest design to keep it in the boulevard. It's the cheaper of the issues as well, you know, to do it that way. You know, it could be put out in the street, we could put more insulation in there to keep it. The problem we have with insulation is you need some heat mass coming from below and as that frost keeps down, that frost, because there's not enough flow in this line to really heat, heat the area up, if you will, so that frost will go around that insulation and can eventually get to the pipe anyway. So it works well when we have normal lines, water lines, bigger sewer lines that are always flowing, you've always got some heat mass going through there, but we don't in this case because there's so little flow in this line, so.
So Keith, looking at the design construction area, there's some utilities in there and it's really hard to tell. Did you actually have the utilities and call and locate to know exactly where they're at, so know how far you're going to be?
Yeah, those were actually from before and those lines weren't moved, so we had that stuff from the original project, so we had it all marked out and all, and noted here, so.
So how many feet are you anticipating this new line to be on the backside of the curve? I thought when we looked at it earlier today, we had determined that to be between seven to eight feet.
Yeah, it's probably closer to 10 feet approximately behind, yeah.
I happened to take a look at it when I came to the meeting tonight and I know his, you know, trees set back quite a bit there.
Yep.
Is there any past experience about doing a, it's 111, about 177 feet, Vicki, is that what we determined today of construction when we were looking at it?
Wish, I wish I could read this.
111 feet, yeah, okay, there it is, 111 feet to that point. Has that ever been directional, do you ever directional bore that type of stuff?
Yeah, I mean, we can. The problem is, this particular line is still fairly flat, even though we're getting more grade. I would be less concerned, once again, if this was a line that had more flow in it. We can accommodate a little bit of that up and down, that kind of thing, but because there's so little flow, we actually already have problems with this line having to jet it out. There's so many solids that get left in the line. So it's always, it's been a maintenance issue for the, for the utility thus far. So I'd be really very concerned about directional drilling and not, and exacerbating that problem because we just don't have enough. You can't control it. You've got to have at least 1% minimally and that's only if I have some amount of flow going through there that I would know I'm going to scour that little bit out. We don't have that here. I would be very concerned about anything frankly, less than 2% on something of this size without having problems. You just can't control it that much. You'll know that we do have a couple of cleanouts in there. Those are, you know, required when you have something that long, but that allows you to go in there if they're, we do start getting some solids to go in there and clean it out.
How wide, how wide a trench are you going to be digging in there? I mean, you're not going real, real deep.
Yeah, it'd probably be 15 feet wide, usually about one to one versus the, versus the depth. And, you know, we're about seven, seven and a half feet at the most and it gets shallower as you continue. So in the yard, it's probably six feet, maybe five and a half feet in through there, so, you know, 10, 11, 12 feet wide.
Because basically you've got to stay two feet wide for every foot down, isn't it? It's bullshit standard.
Well, it's, you can do it with a box. I mean, typically, we don't see that as much as we should.
Right.
Especially when they're this shallow, they tend to not, they'll be a little more vertical than they probably should be, but that's just historically what we see. Depends on the soils too, what kind of soils.
Right. One of my concerns is just to alleviate the potential of doing more damage to his yard and to his trees than what we have to. That's why I was questioning the width. So, I mean, if it's a box that needs to be put in there to eliminate the amount of additional width versus depth, then maybe, and I don't know, you get a box that's two feet wide or whatever, you can work in that.
You can, we can specify a box restricted trench, that's one thing we do. We will get more higher costs to do that, but that would be one way of, essentially then you get pretty much the box width. I mean, we could get something that could be as narrow as four feet wide, four, maybe six feet wide and just go straight down and put a box through there. You would, the box would only be just a single box because it's not deep enough, you know, you'd have to require anything more. We could do that, it'll just, you know, some of the local contractors may, I'm not sure if they have that equipment to do that, they could rent it, but I'm not sure how familiar they are with some of that, that work. So that may be, cause some issues with potentially a couple of, you know, one or two of the locals. So we've been trying to cater this towards a, you know, a local contractor to be able to perform this work.
Now, according to this, are we looking at like at about three different elbows in this line?
Yeah, we use 45s when we get to those because we don't want, we never want to put a 90 in there, so we use a couple of 45s, make those corners. So there's two on the west side and one...
Because I was just wondering if there's not that much flow already and you've got even a 45, it's going to slow it down, are we just going to create another problem?
Well, there's not much other good ways to go about it. I haven't experienced really issues with using 45s. I mean, frankly, I've never used a 90 because it's just a poor idea, so.
Yeah.
But we haven't seen it with 45s that, you know, especially those ones are closer to the home, so you tend to get, you know, the flow kind of slows down the further it gets away from the, from the home, so.
I'm just looking...
And we have cleanouts on either side of them, you know, on one side so that you can go in there and flush them out. And we talked about that actually with Marty today of how to do that and so they probably would not use their jetter for that. They'd probably just hook to a hydrant and pump some water down there, essentially just scour it out.
Because it's solids build up, so it usually ends up in elbows, that's the reason why I was wanting, you know, and if there isn't any flow, that's, we're just going to cause three more problems.
Right, right. It can, that's why we have those cleanouts there to help clean out. And I know that's a concern, what I was told at least from Mr. Meyer and, you know, there are some options that we could have as to maintenance, you know, whether we consider wish to own that, a particular length of that service. I would think we would not want to go that route, but perhaps maintaining a certain length of it might be another option to consider. We discussed going, you know, to that first cleanout, maybe the utility would take the maintenance of that, not the ownership, but the maintenance of that.
To the first cleanout, meaning to the east?
To the first one, as you go upstream from the manhole, so it'd be at that 45 there. If we, you know, it's a, it'd be a discussion with the owner, obviously. If we considered going further, maybe to the next one, that could be something that could be discussed, but, you know, I think that would be a, probably a discussion with the utility, the owner, city and see what would be the appropriate for that. And if you felt that was something you might wish to entertain, ultimately, I guess the, you know, the utility commission, but entertain, but Marty was thinking that would be something that he would be willing to entertain.
And we have to go to that cleanout to the east just to get enough drop? We can't just go straight? Going straight out to the street isn't enough drop, that's the problem, right?
Going, you mean from, straight from his...
Main hall.
Oh, okay, that's right, there's no main there.
The street starts to drop, if you go down the street, you know, once again, the street starts to drop off again to the west, so we end up with less, less cover, you know, it's really cover I'm worried about in the street and continued freezing potential. Definitely increased freezing potential in the road.
All right.
You know, one way to, you know, a box, that's something if we want to, it's going to drive up or cost some, but, you know, that could be one way to mitigate some of the damage to the property is to do, require a box and restricted trench.
Well, I think, you know, whoever the contractor is, is going to work with the landowner, he's going to certainly be there and be involved.
Well, we'll have to see what can be done, but, I mean, yeah, the cost of re-sodding, the cost of a box and whatever that might cost us and limit us in options of who's doing it.
Right.
Right. I think a lot of those guys are pretty good about, you know, save the, save the trees and... Right. Usually, usually the local plumbers, I mean, that's the ones we'll be looking at. They usually do a pretty good job in those kinds of things.
Yep.
And this is, this is their bread and butter. They're used to those smaller services and that, so.
And again, we will be out in the boulevard. We do have certainly the right of way there to do this work, which is where it would be, so.
Yeah, I'd say, we, you know, if you went out at 45 degrees, you probably just barely would get out of the boulevard, you know, 45 each way, seven, you know, seven feet out, but, you know, they're not really going to do that.
No.
Okay. Is there any other questions?
Uh-uh.
Hearing none, what's the wishes of the council? We have had a lot of input here and I know, again, due to the timing of something I get done this fall, I think it needs to be corrected.
Yeah, we can do it before it freezes, that's for sure.
I would say then we're at the point where we would move forward and approve the plans and solicit the quotes for plan change if the council so wishes.
Yeah, I'll make that motion to approve the plans and solicit quotes.
Do I have a motion by Dave? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Dave, second and by Warren. We move forward with the plans and solicit quotes for the plan change as presented. And again, we'll have discussions with the property owner, the timelines and things as well. Okay, any discussion? I'll call the motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries. Four in favor, against. Thank you, Keith. Okay, moving on. Item H, approve assessment services agreement with Stearns County.
Currently, the City of Sac Center, we utilize the service of the Stearns County Assessor for property evaluation. It's an alternative to having a position within the city that does that and most cities have gone with the county. Our agreement is up for renewal and it's for a period of five years from 2014 to 2018. The billing practice remains unchanged. Right now, we pay about $24,000 a year. It's based on a per parcel and every year the county sets the fee schedule, so they would say so much a parcel, but it has been consistently $23,000 to $24,000 for a number of years, so they don't anticipate that to change. This agreement, we had an older agreement and then it was just kind of renewed year to year and then the county board said, well, let's clean this up and let's get all the cities back on a four-year contract. the cities back on a four-year contract, so that is why they proposed this to us. It's very similar to the practice that we've been doing, it just puts it to writing right now, so I'm asking to approve the agreement for property assessment services with Stearns County.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Warren, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dave.
Vicki, I just have one question, I noticed the item five is the agreement, and it states the term, also cites that there's 120-day renewal for written notice.
Mm-hmm.
So you do have some language in there, but I believe that would be then after 2018, so the first time you're going to be able to modify this will be 120 days prior to the end of 31st.
2018, yep.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? None, I'll call the motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries. Four in favor, none against. All right, moving on. We have no unfinished business, we have no new business. We have a consent agenda that was presented in your packet, and I'll go through that. We have a schedule of claims for a total of unpaid claims of $583,649.40. It's a little different than what was in your packet, based on a change order that came just tonight, Vicki had presented that. That was for the vehicle that had now, has arrived at Dan Wellies to be paid, and we just got that today, so we want to include that in the unpaid claims and get that taken care of. So we also have paid claims of $14,728.56 for a total of claims of $598,377.96. We also had our checks from July of $22.57E to $22.81E, and also $35.316 to $35.413, along with three of our payrolls for a total of July checks of $701,2994. We also had a resolution, which was 2014-66, accepting the contributions from the American Legion, so I want to thank them for their contribution of $500 towards the splash pad. And we also had a request from Tina Rody, doing business as Mustang Bar, for temporary extension of her permission for a customer appreciation on September 6th. Any additions to the consent agenda?
The one thing that we did have is that we did a road closure for half of Sinclair Lewis Avenue next to where the mural is going to go. I believe it's for tomorrow night, so we had to hurry that up, but they're, they get back into the street so they can project onto the wall, like between 9:00 and midnight, and I believe it's tomorrow night that they'll be doing that.
Okay, so we'll also have that, add that road closure to the consent agendas, noted?
Mm-hmm.
Is there anything else?
Keith had maybe want to provide us update on the project that he's working on? I guess I didn't have that on there, but I think he's...
Yeah.
Okay.
We will add that to the informational items. Anything else for the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the changes noted?
So...
Seconded.
By Keith, seconded by Dave. Any discussion? I'll call the motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries. Four in favor, none against. We will go into our informational items here, we have just a couple of things that we want to talk about. One is, I'm going to skip over to number B here, we have our candidates for election, and I'll just quickly go through whom they are. Candidates for the November 4th election is for Mayor Dave Thomas and Warren Stone, and for City Council is Keith Johnson, Dr. Diane Kelly, Heidi Leach, and Michael Olson. So we have some great candidates for these positions, so I want to thank those folks for their interest. We also have, quickly need to talk about our budget meeting, we had it scheduled for August 25th. Unfortunately, that timeline isn't going to work for, for some of us, and we just found out today that the county or the state has extended our timeframe to propose any, our budget, which is now September 30th, so we have the whole month of September to do that. The finance committee was going to meet this evening, but just Mike goes out of town, and so we're going to set up that meeting for just after September 1st. So our goal is to have the finance committee meeting the first week of September, and I was hopeful that the council could have the budget meeting on September 10th, which is that second Wednesday, that we don't have anything scheduled for, and then the final budget would come back to the council on September 17th for approval. If there's a reason that would not approve then, we would set a special meeting the night of the 17th for another date prior to September 30th. Does that work for everybody, that's October 24th?
No problem.
At 5:30? Work for you guys?
Yep.
Dave?
Vicki, does that work?
Yep.
Okay.
Nothing wrong with procrastination.
All right, with that, we have no other informational items. Keith, you have one thing you would like to add?
Just wanted to give you, just wanted to give you a brief update on the stormwater, the HH study, and as we promised we would, so the existing system modeling has just been completed, so I can tell you a little bit about what we found from there, and as we move forward, we're starting in the preliminary of actually solutions, and how do we utilize the existing system and come up with new solutions to deal with the problems that we have. And it should probably be no surprise to you with the existing system analysis that basically everything west of Main Street doesn't work, it's severely under capacity. The good news is, if you take that piece off, that which is on 12th Street from Main Street to Fairlane is right on, it works, it's the right capacity through there. We did find the stuff on Fairlane, actually, it's fairly, some things that were done quite a while ago, that piping, there actually appears to be some deficiencies in that, we'll be talking with staff to see if there's been any problems in there, but on the model, it shows that there's deficiencies in the capacity of that, but that doesn't necessarily mean we have to do anything, we just have to make sure, you know, if the system is surcharging but it's still underground, not causing, not causing flooding issues, we may not be all that concerned about. However, now we do have problems from that intersection, you know, 12th and Fairlane downstream becomes a problem. So ultimately, our solutions are going to be look at, you know, cutting Main Street off, many things we pretty well already kind of conceptually talked about, how to run that a different direction perhaps, a different pipe, upgrading the pipes, ponding areas, we'll be looking at several, one could be over by McDonald's, one could be over by what I'd call the northeast of Walmart, kind of in that area, small one over there by Getty and that, and see if there's, really makes any difference for those. So we'll be looking at some of that, looking at different configurations, so that's where we're at in the solutions phase right now, is just getting started, looking at different alternatives, so that's kind of where we're at at this point. Any questions?
No.
Any questions? Thank you, Keith.
Okay, thanks.
Hearing that, and no other questions. Vicki?
I just have one last thing, Splash Pad 5K this Saturday, see you all there?
Yes.
No? You can volunteer, you can walk, run, or crawl.
Great.
So...
All right, thank you. Again, that's a great event, it's a great fundraiser, unfortunately, we're out of town, sorry, Vicki, but I hope that everybody can, anybody that's interested certainly to attend, it'll be a fun day, I'm sure, by everybody that's going.
And I think the start location is going to be moved like by the ban shell in that parking lot area, so we have bathrooms, electricity, that type of thing, so rather than the construction zone right down at the splash pad right now, in fact, they're laying block tomorrow for the shelter, so a lot of stuff going on down there, so we'll pull it back to the other area, but there'll be signage.
Great, thank you. Hearing that, hearing no other information, is there a motion to adjourn?
So...
Motion by Keith, seconded by Warren. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.